Let's talk about five million dollars. Is the state paying the people who weren't paid? And that we're going to be paying the state back? This is how it's going to work. We're paying the state back five hundred thousand dollars for ten years? For the deficit that just came up? It's so far, it's five million, but it could go higher or lower? Like, is that what he was talking about?
Once the audit's finished, where that final deficit number is, you'll get a state ball on that amount. And we pay it back over ten years, no interest on it.
Ten years, okay. But it's like you didn't pay vendors? Is that where this money's missing? Like, is it sloppy bookkeeping? Or is something going to be held accountable?
I can't answer that question till the audit's done, but it's going to be paying back the vendors that we owe from last year's bills.
So I have to wait for the other audit to be done?
Yeah. So after the CAFRA's completed, then the state advances the amount of the deficit. At the conclude, once that check is issued, the State Department of Education comes in and does a forensic audit to identify one particular group of individuals, whether they be vendors, or employees, or whatever, to be built into the overall deficit amount. At this point, without knowing where it is, you know, we can't say. But, once the state advances the money for the deficit amount, they come in and do a forensic audit. We anticipate, and then after the check or the amount comes in, forensic auditors will be coming out, and then we'll have the forensic audit that we'll have to contend with.
Did the board hire anybody to do the forensic audit over the school?
No, the Department of Education doesn't.
Did you hire, did the board which paid?
No, it's a function of the process. Once you're under state monitors jurisdiction, once the deficit amount is established and the amount is advanced, a part of that process is coming in to see, you know, what created the deficit. So it's not a hiring situation. It is the Department of Education that comes in.
Okay, now, of course, this is like five million dollars. It's not like a little bit of money. Is people going to be held accountable to the tax figures of this town?
Once we have the forensic audit, the board will have to consume that and determine what action, if any, can be taken.
So there could be sloppy bookkeeping all the way up to indictments?
I'm sorry?
It could be sloppy bookkeeping all the way up to indictments?
I mean, it could be. I couldn't tell you one way or the other.
Well, Mr. Grekka, when you were in Elwin Park, you had the same situation in there. Did anybody get held accountable for that?
I think it depends on, I mean, you said indictments. I don't recall any indictments. I was a director of special services, then went into middle school principal around that time. And then, obviously, still, the deficit was going on when I was, became superintendent. There was no indictments that I am aware of.
Well, because this district didn't have that back many years ago, and the superintendent and the P A did get indicted for one point five million for that. So I was just wondering if that would be happening again or something like that?
Again, I think, as Mr. McKee was saying, in terms of, you know, in theory, in theory, anything can, you know, be possible, but I don't think even the state monitor has stated that, that he does not think there was anything in terms of something that would lead to indictment. But, again, that's why a forensic audit would be done.
Does he give sloppy bookkeeping? They call it sloppy bookkeeping usually?
I understand what you mean by saying that, but I don't, I wouldn't know, you know, I wouldn't know what the reason was. I think the audit will tell a lot, and I think the...
And when will that audit be totally done?
So, the regular audit, I believe?
No, the forensic audit.
Well, that will be, that's usually goes along hand in hand with the law.
Once we finish the internal audit, that starts tomorrow. When that gets processed, you get a deficit number that's taken by the state monitor down to the state for review. Once we receive our funds from the state to pay back the deficit, it takes another six to eight months for the forensic audit to be done. So look at a year from now, give or take.
Okay, so Ron and John, the others. I mean, I would ask him directly some other questions. Will he be available at any time to consult with him? Do you think Ron is here?
He has a email address, and you can reach out to him as well. You can reach out to my office.
Okay. And you know what I already answered?
I have the state questions I've written down.
Okay.
The state monitor, that was told that me and monitor night will come to the days and answer any question you have at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, that's coming.
Okay, that's no problem. All right, there's good personnel committee. You know, we have a question. Anybody need to anybody at the hiring tonight, or whatever? Just curious. Okay, now I want to go to some checks. Page five. EZ Pass. Why does this school district have an EZ Pass or would it be used for?
EZ Pass is used when the, most likely are buses. For the most part, when they go to from events, they have to use the parkway or the turnpike, they're going to pay tolls.
You know, the athletics?
It's mostly athletics.
Just mostly athletics?
Yeah.
Page nine. Johnny on the spot. We're not doing any construction yet, so what do we have that for?
That is the company that also does temporary fencing at Franklin School.
Thank you. Page twelve. Okay, School Boards Association. How many board members went to the convention? And do they still have to file a report when they get back for what they learned?
We have a Gonski convention that's coming up the end of October. But you have to pay that in advance, that's why it's on there.
Okay, so they will be coming back with the report of what they did? What board members are going through tag? Just one?
Five.
Three? Four? Okay, but the rules are, you're supposed to come back and tell us what you learned? Am I right or wrong?
That is correct.
Thank you. Page twenty-three.
That's all P E's done the same way, you come back with a report.
And, page twenty-three. Sweetwater, what is that? Sweetwater?
Sweetwater?
Check the sweetwater.
That is...
The music shop on Regro.
Yeah, that's music.
Not that sweet sound.
Do you know what that is? Page twenty-three, first check on the top.
It's a sweet sound like?
No, it says sweetwater. It says, I don't know, I remember something like that. It's on the... Page twenty-two, first check.
Well, the only thing right there is it says repertoire. So, her license for all...
Musical insurance.
Musical insurance?
Sweet, and the conditioning, and the cleaning, a wonderful arrangement that the kids use for their bed.
Okay. One last question about the five million. And that was in the paper. Why was the district fined three hundred thousand dollars? Because of the spending of the chapter money or chapter ninety-three money? But why did he get fined? Was he misappropriating it?
That was a part of an OFAC investigation into the use of Title I funds. I believe that, I absorbed it. And it was a three hundred thousand dollar fine associated with, a fine, a reimbursement for the use of Title I funds.
So you had to reimburse the funds, not that you were fined?
We have to reimburse, while the state comes in and they made a determination that we were three hundred thousand dollars, we have to make that payment back to the state.
All right, thank you.
So if you go on our website, it should be on there, Department of Education. Just click on Department of Education at the top, and you'll have a call down.
Laura Yerker?
Hi, everyone. I was one of the parents that got laid off from my position in June for the budget deficit. And I just have a question. Why, all the parents and names that got laid off, why there's not some sort of a recall list for all these old positions that are now being retired for? Because I know specifically the classroom I was in, it was the pre-k disabled classroom, I could be in the school. I worked there, we have a good working relationship, the teacher and I. And I actually applied for the position again, and never heard back from anybody regarding it. So I'm just curious as to why none of us were, you know, reached out to, to see if we were interested in these positions before them being open to the insider public.
I could definitely speak to you more specifics about it on the following, you know, when I add more information. But I know as positions have been opening, I wasn't aware of any list, but it's definitely something you can keep in mind.
I reached out to Amy Stevens.
Okay.
I sent my resume. You know, I never heard back from anybody. And I'm, I'm still passionately about working with those kids, so disappointed.
Twenty years, I never heard that either.
I'm just really disappointed to see all these names of new hires went. It's all our question, but yeah, they're different than any other classroom. And I know before I started, there was a lot of turnover with, people don't want to be diapers, they don't want to care for the kids, because of their different disabilities, and it's not for everybody.
Sure.
But I enjoyed it. So it's disheartening to not even be part of, when I'm applying for it, I'm not saying for a special cause, but I was down for the position.
How was it, was this the one thing?
When the last posting was put out. I think it was put out the day of, the day of course school started.
Okay. I could definitely find out and get back to it. It's the best I can do right now.
All right, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and anybody else, it hurts to be honest. If you wanted to chat to me as well, I can help you to it as well.
Susan DeRoulo?
Hi, I guess this is, sort of follows on the last person just spoke about. I think that as parents, we keep hearing this number of this deficit, and we don't know how this is affecting our kids in terms of cuts, in terms of programs. There hasn't been any kind of announcement or written notification of what exactly is happening in terms of teacher days, in terms of programs, in terms of extracurricular activities, in terms of just the education itself. And I would like some sort of accounting of what's going on and how it's going to happen. Just last week, I was at a child's school, and it said the STEM program. They used to go to, I think to Maywood or something, they used to take the bus, and they used to take the kids there, and that's no longer going to happen. So I don't know if that's because of budget cuts, but it would be good for all of you to give us an understanding of how our children's educations are affected by these cuts.
Still, what I'm not sure about, do you have any?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, but as far as extracurriculars, probably going from the upper elementary schools to the high school, there's just really not that many in the, in the, in the lower elementary schools?
I don't need this to be answered right now, but I do think that it's important for all of us to have an accounting of what has happened.
No, no, I can give you a general...
In terms of cuts, in terms of teacher days, in terms of instruction, just everything.
Yep.
I know off the top of your head, you might not know, but I...
Teacher's was a little bit over ten, I believe it was eleven. If I'm not mistaken. Teacher's days, I don't have a number for you. I can tell you that we have to be in compliance in terms of, whether it be a classroom aid that reaches a certain number, that there needs to be a classroom aid there, depending on the level, whether it's high school, grade six, or preschool. There's a requirement, it's regular state code, we have to have that requirement. If a student has an IEP that requires a one-to-one aid or a point-five aid, which would be a half, we need to have that aid.
With this here, five million dollars, and we know it's going to have an impact on the students, and I just want to know what we can anticipate, and just some sort of accounting and some transparency from you all.
Absolutely. One of the things I can say is that the board, one of the things that was very important for them, even prior to the starting, with the previous administration and similar board, to bring when it starts is that student programs would not be impacted. I mean, there were some things that scheduling-wise and things of that nature, you had to look at and maybe be a little bit different than we'd want to be in the past. And moving forward again, hopefully, we can get back to certain things. But in terms of actual clubs and activities, there was probably a handful of things, a large number, as recently on this agenda, that we're still approving. So we're going out of our way to try to make sure students aren't impacted, you know, in a lot of the clubs, activities, sports teams, obviously academically.
Academically, the most important, but yeah.
Sure. We'll definitely keep you updated and try to get into some more details at the next meeting. If not sooner. You can reach out to me as well, the email, it's on the website in the...
Okay.
The call, you got it?
Hannah, Maria?
I'm talking about the deficit. I have two questions I would like to ask that first. Do two people sign on the checks when you're passing out money? Are there two signatures on the check? I mean, this is a business. When you sign, money is missing. When you sign a check, usually there's two parties that sign the check. Plus, another question on top of that. Are you people bonded if you're handling money? Are any of you people bonded? One person?
The Board of Education members are not bonded, they're not required to be. However, the business administrator is a bonded position. So, Scott Bysick is the business administrator. His position carries the bond.
So, in other words, he's the only one that would sign the checks?
No, not necessarily. It just means that he has the bond. The Board of Education has the equivalent of directors and officers insurance. So they have an identity insurance package for them as directors and officers. However, in terms of a bond, that's only the business administrator.
Do two people sign a check if you need a check for something? Or is this one person only?
Depends on the check.
Are you?
Depends on the check.
Another thing. I'm not satisfied with that answer, but I guess I have to tell you. I usually think two, two signatures to be on the check if you know where your money is.
Right, and all money that's paid is, has to be approved by a board resolution. So, in terms of the checks and balances, which I think is what you're referring to, the checks and the requests, actually, one of the previous questions came up about what checks are going out. Therefore, the Board of Education is required to review the checks and then approve the payment that comes before it. So, in terms of the checks and balances, the Board of Education has that because they're required to review the check requests that come in.
I mean, you have your books for every year, right? I mean, you're auditing every year.
Yeah, not only are they audited every year, but there's also, you have a treasurer. You have a treasurer of school monies who does monthly reconciliation from the business administrator's accounts. So not only are they required to be audited on the annual basis, not only is the business administrator bonded, but there's another position, the school treasurer, who has to reconcile the checkbook.
But we don't have this at our...
I think, I think your question is very similar to what the Board of Education's actually asking themselves, and has been asking. But, ma'am, once the, once the CAFRA is completed, the initial annual audit is completed, and it has to be completed by November first, once that's completed, then the forensic audit gets done, and the Board of Education will at least be in a position to answer those questions.
I have one question. First of all, I want to thank you. You're very good, you were very nice on the phone. You didn't leave me. I don't have kids at school, I'm a grandmom. But you, you were very exact with what you were saying about Washington School. Another thing I want to say is that, I think, I broke this up at a meeting a couple of years ago. I'm looking back to when my children were in school, and my grandchildren are all products of the nurse's high school and grammar school. And they used to have, so, you know, they used to have, somebody on the board was in charge of each school. You had a school, you had a school, you had a school, you had a school. There was no bullfrolic. You were responsible for that school if something was wrong with it. The parents went to the person that took care of the school. No casting the buck. You were responsible. Because I know Louis Stolow was ours, and nothing was going. And I think that's a suggestion that you should dwell over. I think it's a good suggestion.
I think you're right, and I think that's a great...
I do.
I think that's a great idea.
But it should be. It should be like this. This way, you don't have to get said, "Oh, I told him to do it, and he told him to do it." That's wrong. You're responsible for every school that you assign.
It's a great suggestion, Ms. Mario. So, one of the things that board members are now, are required to, is sign off on their quote of ethics. And those people, and I know there's people among the public who have served on the Board of Ed, the board's role is not to administer schools. The board is to ensure that the schools are administered well. So, when you talk about having a board member responsible for a school, you just have to balance that against, the board member can't run the school. Nor should the board member really be in the school in any, you know, in a capacity where they might be administering schools. It's really for their protection than it is now. If it's just a liaison to maybe the school's PTA or something like that, that might make some sense, but that's the balance.
Maybe I didn't say it right. Louis Stolow was our, whatever you call, when you mentioned her. If we had a problem, if we had a problem, we went to Louis. We'd go in, talk to the principal, and say da, 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 da. We went and talked to the man that was in charge of our school. He always solved our problems. I'm not saying that he's going to quit there with a hammer and nails. I'm saying if there's a problem, somebody's got to work on it. Everybody gathers the buck, and it's not ready.
The one thing I will say is that, and if this took place before, that's fine. The buck stops here, the buck stops the Board of Education.
Oh, I have to go?
And, no, and I think that the board has done what they can to take responsibility for everything, whether it's happening in the Washington School, or we're dealing with the deficit, or Title I funding. The buck stops here, so ultimately, they are responsible. I'm just a little cautious about having board members, you know, managing or administering or solving problems in schools because at these times, board members really can't be in that role.
Just one more thing. Somebody who I don't even know, they talk, they talk to me, and this is the right hand back to God, told me that they called the board of this five times, they never got a return from the board. That's terrible.
Rob Corbuccia? Am I saying that right? Rob? Benny? Canaro?
I have a question I want to fill in. I'm going to shorten it because if that woman would get up here and her voice would crack because she wanted to work with children so much, that's somebody that has to have, and I won't work on our children. So let's give her a call, and we have a position filled out. The other question that I have is the status of the referendum, specifically the lower schools, renovations, Washington, Roswell, Columbus. How are we doing on that? Excuse me? Roswell? Come on, that's what I'm sorry, I said Frank. Okay, and last year, we pulled eleven million out of the referendum, and staff are here untouched. Because of that, we're probably going to have to pay interest. How much is that going to cost us? And where are we going to go with that? And is that going to affect anything in the future as far as, as far as the referendum is concerned? What was the rush?
Your first part of the question is the notes that we have off the referendum to risk interest payments on that?
Yeah, how much is that? I mean, how much is that going to cost us?
We just read the notes for an extra year. That interest payment, I believe, was seventy-seven thousand dollars.
What if we don't have that money? What if we don't have the money?
Right now, some money's been spent by your to high school, don't phase one, which you see going on, it's almost completed. The rest of the answer is, I defer it to the state monitor because then the monitor controls all finances. So right now, everything else is on hold. As he goes through his notes and review of the project itself.
That's it. It's definitely cost us some money to pull it out.
Haven't said that, I think.
Yeah. Okay. But as far as the referendum, how are we doing with the, with the lower, lower grade schools?
Everything else is on hold, pending the monitor review.
Okay.
Chris?
Yes?
Finance facilities and district planning.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of finance facilities, the district planning committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that the following finance facilities and district planning committee actions of the board numbered one through ten be adopted.
Second.
Ropel? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Tringenopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Rappisato?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Ms. Algeri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona?
Four.
Education and curriculum, Sue?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education will be entertained. We so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that one through three be accepted.
Ropel? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Tringenopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Rappisato?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Four.
Ms. Algeri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona?
Four.
Athletics student regulations committee. Ms. Rappisato?
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of policy and regulatory areas committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make a motion that we approve items one through four.
Second.
Ropel? Ms. Malick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Ms. Rappisato? Sorry, Ms. Tringenopoulos?
Four.
Ms. Rappisato?
Four.
Ms. Drell?
Four.
Ms. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Keith?
Ms. Algeri? Four.
Ms. DeGrona?
Four.
Athletic student activities and substance abuse.
Check.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of athletic student activities and substance abuse committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. Hearing none, I make one, one and two be accepted.
Hearing none, I make one and two be accepted.
Roopole? Ms. Malinick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Enjopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscato?
Four.
Mr. DeGrona?
Four.
Ms. Kee?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona? New business, Ron?
Okay. Here the job of the board of education, approve the initial application for tempor- temporarily, tempor-
Temporal?
Tempor-
Tempor-
Temporary, uh, instructional space, the use of St. Michael's School, um, at 6:24 A J M, there's a new period of September 14, 2018, to September 14, 2018.
Roopole? Ms. Malinick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Enjopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscato?
Four.
Mr. DeGrona?
Four.
Ms. Kee?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona? Personnel committee, turn.
Any board member who takes exception to any of the following listed actions under the category of education and curriculum committee may so indicate now, and a separate motion for each of the accepted actions will be entertained. I make a motion, um, number one, four, number six, zero, forty-one.
Roopole? Ms. Malinick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Enjopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscato?
Four.
Mr. DeGrona?
Four.
Ms. Kee?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona?
Four. Number five, the board of the school has the recommendation for the superintendent of the school, of the board to Monica Burden, who positioned a full-time stewardess, step one, $33,760, by the September fourth, 2018, to 2018, at the end of the year.
Roopole? Ms. Malinick?
Four.
Ms. Jarvis?
Four.
Mr. Enjopoulos?
Four.
Mr. Rappiscato?
Yes.
Mr. DeGrona?
Four.
Mr. Donovan?
Four.
Ms. Kee?
Four.
Ms. Alcieri?
Four.
Ms. DeGrona? On agenda is Elaine Stone.
I'd like to know, um, and before I have the school program, if the town paid you the $25,000 to, um, use the facilities and whatever you were going to do with that, um...